Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the watershed committee meeting slash special meeting of the board of directors for Marin Water on Tuesday, December 12th. And prior to our roll call, if I could consult with our council regarding one of our members.
Yes, thank you. Director Russell is here remotely and is requesting that the board take an urgency vote to allow him to participate remotely under the emergency exceptions. And Director Russell, you would just need to give us a brief statement of why you're needing having an emergency to participate. You don't need to state any details of medical conditions. And you do also need to let the board know whether there is any person 18 years of older or 18 years older or over participating with you there. If that's not clear, please feel free to ask questions.
No, I think I got it. There's nobody here but me. And I tested positive for COVID yesterday. So that's why I'm not at the meeting.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote then to approve the remote attendance.
Yeah, so we'd have a motion in a second for the urgency vote.
I'll make the motion for the emergency.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, Terry?
Yes.
Let's let's take the vote and then we can proceed with the roll call.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, roll call vote.
That's okay.
It's all good. Director, I was gonna call you Larry Kush. Sorry, Director Ranji Kush.
Hi.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt.
Hi.
Director Jed Smith.
Hi.
And Chair Matt Sampson.
Hi.
And should also, and Director Larry Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, excellent. We'll go ahead and move forward with the roll call, please, Terry.
Thank you. Director Larry Russell.
Hi, we're here.
Director Ranji Kush.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Matt Sampson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. If I can have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Um, yes. Director Larry Russell.
Hi.
Director Ranji Kush.
Hi.
Director Jed Smith.
Hi.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Sampson.
Hi. Next item for public comments on non-agenda matters.
Um, I do have one, Mr. Phil Sauter, if this is what you'd like to speak on.
Yes, thank you. At a previous watershed committee meeting, I had suggested that if we're going to look seriously at lower quality water sources to blend with our high quality water from the watershed, that we might not need to put a lot of resources into improving our watershed, only to have it compromised by adding water of inferior quality. One of my fellow board attendees, a member of the public who regularly participates in this meeting says that the point I made wasn't clear or understandable. And in case others were confused, I wanted to give an analogy. If I were going to bake a cake and the recipe said to use only the best quality vanilla, I might consider waiting until I had some high quality stuff in the pantry. But if I found all I had was a box of powdered eggs, I wouldn't be so particular about the vanilla. Don't get me wrong, I firmly believe that we should invest heavily in the watershed that has been so good to us for over a century. All I'm hoping for is that we continue to respect this great asset by being very careful about the other sources of water we mix it with, and I'm sure we will. Along those lines, I'm going to duck out of this meeting at 2 o'clock and join a Zoom meeting sponsored by the Sierra Club on treated wastewater. I think I heard a couple of board members discussing it in a recent meeting, and the questions I want to ask the Sierra Club experts are, one, is there a percentage of treated wastewater that is okay to blend with potable water? And two, is there a percent of treated wastewater that would be okay to blend with water for non-potable water uses like outdoor irrigation? If I get some useful info, I'll try to bring it back to the board. And if somebody has any additional questions they'd like to ask, I know you can't respond to my comment, but if you can, you know, filter it into the comments over the next half hour, I'll be happy to carry it forward and bring back what answers I get. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the minutes of our prior watershed committee meeting on 21 September of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, any public comment?
There are none for this item.
Excellent. Cover roll call vote, please.
Yes. Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Uh, I was not able to attend, but I can, I watched it. I can approve. I'm just being clear that I was not, I was not attending, but I approve of the minutes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Sampson.
Hi. Okay, next up on the agenda is our annual Northern Spotted Owl Report. Carl, welcome.
Good afternoon, Board. Carl Sanders, Marin Water. I'd like to introduce Renee Comer from Point Blue Conservation. She is a member of the team that we relied on for the last 20-plus years for quite a bit of data to inform critical work that we perform on the watershed, both vegetation facility-wise. Renee is the avian ecologist with Point Blue. She's been a critical part of the member team for our Northern Spotted Owl monitoring, our nesting bird surveys, and our triennial bird surveys that we conduct as well. She'll be presenting this afternoon a report or a summary of her 2023 findings on Northern Spotted Owls.
Okay. Oh, I see. Thank you. Thanks, Carl, and thanks for having me here today. I think I'm just supposed to share the screen and hopefully. All right. Thank you very much. Let's see if I can. All right. So today I'm gonna start with a little overview of the Northern Spotted Owl, their range, habitat, talk about their conservation status, and then I'll jump into talking about the monitoring program here on our um Marin Water lands, also countywide, our objectives, partners, and the data that we collect. I'll talk about some of our results since 1999, since we began monitoring on Marin Water lands and put 2023 results into context. So the Northern Spotted Owl is one of three subspecies of spotted owls. They range from British Columbia to Marin County, California. So we're at the southernmost extent of their range, and their range is shown in kind of the lighter blue-green on the screen. They are an iconic species of old-growth forest. In 1990, they were listed as a federally threatened subspecies that was primarily attributed to habitat loss and specifically due to commercial timber harvest throughout much of their range. In 2016, due to continued declines in California, they were also listed as a state-listed subspecies in California as well. Currently, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service considers the top threats to the spotted owls to be habitat loss, and that's both current habitat loss but also lag effects from prior habitat loss, as well as competition with the barred owl. And the barred owl is a closely related species to the spotted owl. Their historic range is in eastern North America. Over the last hundred or so years, they've expanded westward, and they now completely overlap with the Northern Spotted Owl. They're slightly larger, more of a generalist, and they outcompete with spotted owls for space and resources. They are considered to be an invasive species here now by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and they have been linked to declines of spotted owls throughout much of their range. Um, in Marin County, we have kind of a unique population of Northern Spotted Owls here. It's actually a photo of the barred owl is the picture on the left there. But in Marin, there's no commercial timber harvest. Many of the forests that were previously logged have grown and are pretty mature and suitable habitat for spotted owls now. We have very few barred owls in the county to date. And, you know, while spotted owls have been typically associated with old-growth forests, they're also in Marin, can be associated with these urban areas or areas where we've got residential areas embedded into the forest. And so we see, you know, spotted owl fledglings perched above roads and busy trails and things like that, as well as finding them in more remote areas on water district lands. In Marin, threats to the spotted owl are similar in most cases to other places in their range. You know, while we only have a few barred owls so far, we would consider that to be a primary threat if the numbers increased, and we would expect that spotted owls would respond in the same ways that they did in other areas of the range. Habitat loss through urban development or high severity fire could potentially reduce their habitat here. Other threats include climate change, noise and other disturbances, rodenticide poisoning, genetic isolation, and sudden oak death has potential to impact particularly their prey populations, which is primarily dusky-footed wood rats around here. So I mentioned they're an iconic species of old-growth forests. In Marin County, they are found in remaining old-growth habitats. They're also found primarily in second-growth coniferous forests, coast redwoods, dug fir forests, but as well as, we also find them in a mix of dense hardwood evergreen forests, so like bay live oak forests, as well as, on the photo on the right, there's a forest photo of a nest area there that includes oak and Pacific madrone forest and nesting spotted owls found in these types of habitats as well. And that type of habitat, these mixed hardwoods are really unique to Marin as well because they're not, it's, when you go farther north in the Pacific Northwest, it's much more dominated by coniferous forests. So these habitat types aren't really available and is associated with spotted owls as they are here in Marin. So in Marin County, we've been surveying for spotted owls on Marin Water lands since the late 1990s. Point Blue has been contracted by Marin Water since 1999. And not only do we monitor on Marin Water lands, but there are countywide efforts. Point Blue, we survey both for Marin Water and Marin County parks. We combine those data annually and do a joint report to both agencies from surveys on their lands as well as surveys on private and municipal lands, typically areas that are adjacent to their boundaries, where protections to spotted owls may extend beyond the boundaries of the watershed lands, for example, or be near somewhere where Marin Water may have work planned. The National Park Service also has a monitoring program where they monitor their lands and California State Parks lands as well, and that almost doubles the sites. And so we do have a good picture of spotted owl health in the county. Today, I'm just gonna focus on the data that we collect on Marin Water and Marin County Parks lands, that annual data that we provide to the agencies. In addition to the long-term data that we collect, and I should say that the long-term data we collect is primarily on occupancy and reproductive success. So we return to the same sites every year. We evaluate whether or not spotted owls are present. If they are, we determine is it occupied by a single owl or is it occupied by a pair. Northern spotted owls do not nest every year, so then we determine if they're occupied by a pair. Are they nesting or not? And then how many young fledge from a nest? The reason this is important, one of the, besides understanding the long-term population dynamics for this species, we can also provide real-time results to Marin Water staff throughout the nesting season to let them know where nests are located and where there aren't any nests, so that they can avoid disturbing nesting spotted owls. And there are specific protections to spotted owls, noise disturbance, in particular is a concern during the nesting season. And so we're kind of constantly giving them updates on what we learn. The long-term data can also help inform that because where we're surveying long-term, when there is a management need, we often have really good information going into a site on where the owls might be that year, and that can help us get the information faster when we need it for management purposes. Um, so a couple of quick result slides here. So this figure shows occupancy of spotted owls since 1999, from 1999 to 2023. The percent occupancy is shown on the side, and what I really want you to notice here is the black bars represent the percent of sites that we monitor that are occupied by pairs, where the lighter gray and the white are single birds and unoccupied site. And the take home from this figure is that the percent of sites that are occupied by pairs has been high and quite consistent over the course of the study. In 2023, 86% of the sites that we monitored were occupied by pairs. It's slightly lower than the study average of 90%. We did look at that statistically, and we didn't find a difference between this year's data and prior years. I should also note that we monitor more sites every year because we're constantly learning more. And so we look at only sites in this figure that were ever occupied by a pair at least in one year. So you can see the sample size of the study goes from 10 in 1999 at the base of the black bar up until 49 sites in 2023. And so we're constantly learning more about where the owls are in the county and adding them to the monitoring program. Um, the next slide is looking at reproductive success of spotted owls. And for that, we measure fecundity. And fecundity is a very standard metric that's used for Northern Spotted Owls throughout their range. It's essentially defined as the number of female young produced per territorial adult female. And there's a count for each year since 2000, going through to 2023. The numbers above the little dots are simply the number of adult females. So again, that shows how our sample size has gotten larger. In 2023, we found that the fecundity was exactly equal to the study average, so 0.4. 0.4 relative to other studies is a relatively high reproductive success. And we found no evidence of a significant trend over time in fecundity, and that is what we want to see. And I will say that, you know, Marin is really unique in that we are seeing, you know, pretty stable reproductive success, stable sites in terms of their being occupied by pairs. So in summary, as I just said, spotted owls were documented at most sites again in 2023. We have relatively high and stable reproduction. The stable spotted owl population in Marin is unique among the range or in the range. And, you know, we really think that the mosaic of protected habitats here, as well as no low number of barred owls likely drives that that healthy population. Lastly, monitoring spotted owls on Marin Water lands is an important part of evaluating population health for this threatened species. It will help give us an early warning sign if those trends do change and start to decline. And it can also help to avoid disturbance to nesting owls. And I will leave it at that and thank Marin Water for the continued funding and support and the many other partners on this project.
Great. And thank you very much for not only the report but also the support of the district. For member comments.
Ranji.
Yeah, thank you for a great presentation, particularly when it has encouraging news. You said there's no trends in fecundity, but you could be nitpicky and say it's actually a stable trend, right?
Yes.
That's great to hear. So, you know, I think it's inspiring for all of us to continue to devote resources and effort to not only monitoring but also ensuring that the environments are supportive of endangered species. I'm glad we're able to do that. Just a couple of just small questions. You mentioned subspecies of the spotted owl. Does that mean that they will interbreed? Or do they stay very distinct in terms of mating?
Yeah, they stay pretty distinct. So the different, the three different subspecies, Northern Spotted Owls, California Spotted Owl is typically found in the Sierra Nevada and the, in Southern California, and then we've got the Mexican Spotted Owl. There's a tiny little zone of like an intergression zone where they meet in the northern and the California Spotted Owl. The birds in Marin County are northern. There was some like genetic work done a number of years ago to confirm that because there was question of, you know, are these the spotted, you know, definite Northern Spotted Owls? And they were.
And they, so they may not be able to mate, or that's not clear.
They mate with each, I mean.
Within, within the subspecies. I'm just.
Yeah.
Just biologically kind of curious.
Biologically, a Northern Spotted Owl and a California Spotted Owl could likely interbreed, but they're typically pretty separated in their range.
Great. Thanks. And I think you might have mentioned this, but I missed it. What is the direct impact of the barred owl? Are they just more effective, you know, at getting resources and food?
Yes, yeah. So they're slightly larger. They're more of a generalist species, and they, they actually overlap in resource requirements with Northern Spotted Owl so closely that they, and the Northern Spotted Owl is a dietary specialist. So barred owls can come in and eat everything that spotted owls are eating plus more. And so you can, you know, four barred owl territories in what was one Northern Spotted Owl territories. They also want the same nest sites. You know, they, they can kind of push spotted owls out of the prime habitat. Usually, when a barred owl moves in, you'll see the spotted owls either go to poorer habitat or disappear from the territory entirely. So they're out competing for resources is the primary way that they're causing declines in the population. Yeah, sure.
Um, great report. It's really exciting stuff. A couple of just, you know, management-related questions, which is, you know, what could, is there anything we could do to create more and better habitat? And I've got a couple of questions, but we'll stop, start with that one. In terms of our land use management practices, there's limits to what we can do, but if there are things that we could, I'm sure we'd like to hear that.
Right. That's a good question. You know, I don't have specific management, habitat management recommendations. I think, you know, the water district lands have been supporting healthy populations of spotted owls right now. I think there's certainly opportunities to look at, you know, habitat-type studies and things like that and see like, are there, are they keying in on more successful, you know, are they more successful in certain areas or looking at dusky-footed wood rats, for example? But yeah, I think Carl and I could probably come up with some ideas, but I don't have any specific management recommendations at this time.
Yeah. Renee had mentioned the importance of the mosaic heterogeneity across the landscape. I think that's really a key part of what has made for a stable population in Marin.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, maybe food for future thought to come and come back at a later point. But if there's, if there's anything that we can do as part of our land, our land management practices to encourage habitat, that'd be great. It would also be great to know if there's, if barred owls, I didn't know that they were basically another invasive into our ecosystem, not unlike others that we manage. Is there something we should be doing to try to dissuade barred owl habitat?
Yeah.
Again, within limitations of what we can do, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, from a habitat perspective, the barred owls are likely keying into a lot of the same things that spotted owls are. So, so in that way, you wouldn't be able to dissuade them necessarily. There's some hope in areas north of the range that, you know, if there is good habitat, that could help potentially buffer some of the impacts of barred owls. So I think, you know, if there's continued, if there's, if there are large amounts of habitat loss, for example, that could then compound the effects of barred owls, because you're getting more than one threat on top of each other. So having those healthy habitats and areas that can support spotted owls are really one of the best habitat management things you could do for barred owls.
Okay, great. Well, I'll just say if there's further thought at any other point, it'd be great to know. And, you know, climate resilience is another factor that you sort of mentioned as another risk into the future, and we're trying to, again, manage our lands into the future with that in mind. So any future thought about that would be encouraged. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Renee, for your presentation. And as you know, I've been a long-term supporter of Point Blue. What a tremendous organization. I think a model for looking at habitat, environmental impact, science-based. The vast majority of the staff is our scientists. And Point Blue looking at not just the bird species, starting off as the Point Rays Bird Observatory, and looking at, you know, the whole area from Point Rays to, to the Farallon Islands, to the Golden Gate Bridge, but now extending way beyond into all impacts of the habitat up into the California and the Sacramento Delta. So I'm super proud to be associated with you guys and super proud to be working with you. And it was even more fun to go out onto the watershed with you and to go spot those spotted owls early in the spring and to climb up that steep hill with you, Carl. I mean, we're lucky to have both of you on our side and looking out for the species. And my understanding is that one of the unique reasons why we have one of the best spotted owl habitat environments in the world in our land is because we're on an island, a relative island, that our forest is not connected to the forests north, to Sonoma, et cetera, and that that bridge is a barrier for the barred owl not to cross. However, I heard that the barred owl did show, there was some indications that it may have in the last months. And I was wondering if you could just comment on sightings of barred owls here and how you're tracking that impact? And otherwise, just thank you so much for all you do.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Jed, for that. So the, yes, so we do know that Marin County does tend to be a fairly isolated population of spotted owls, both, you know, from a genetic perspective, they're, they're pretty genetically isolated. There's not a lot of movement of spotted owls between Marin County and areas to the north and vice versa. There's not a lot of immigration from spotted owls there. And that both possibly has helped slow the spread of barred owls into here as well. There's a break in the forest between Marin County and Sonoma-Napa counties. That is probably a bit of a deterrent for barred owls making it in here as quickly as they've made it into other areas. But that genetic isolation for spotted owls also makes them a little more vulnerable to a large disturbance, like, say, you know, a large habitat disturbance or an influx of barred owls, something that would cause their populations to decline. That being said, we have had some barred owls in the county. The first barred owls were detected here in 2005, and they've, we've never had more than one known breeding pair at a time. To date, actually, there was a report of a barred owl just earlier this week in Point Rays that someone's following up on. We do think that there are some, you know, probably young birds moving around. And we detected just one on surveys in 2023. So they are in the county. There is research happening with them now. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has a management, draft management plan out for public comment now, and the entire range is noted as well as Marin County in there. And so they are, they're making management recommendations for the species.
Director Russell.
I just wanted to follow up on that a little bit. So I guess if we only have one pair of barred owls, we don't have to worry about culling, more or less.
Actually, well, so currently, there's no pairs of barred owls, no known pairs of barred owls in Marin, to my knowledge. I will say that most scientists and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service treat that differently. They're, because we're at the early phases of invasion, the consideration is that getting, removing barred owls while the invasion is early will help prevent removing barred owls in as large of numbers as has happened in the other parts of their range, where barred owls have gotten a stronghold in Marin, in other parts of the range. and really, really caused huge declines of, of spotted owls, like 12% a year level of declines. And so the current recommendation by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service that they have out on draft is to remove the barred owls in these areas that have healthy populations. If you, if we can, while it's, while it's early. Because it'll help to prevent larger numbers from, from needing to be removed if they start breeding here in large numbers.
That must be a little tricky because they kind of look alike a little bit, at least to the lay eye.
To the lay eye, yes. To the, the experts, not, not at all. But, but the people who have, so there, there have been some, there has been some research done on what removing barred owls does to spotted owl populations. And the, the professionals and experts that have done the removals are all highly trained in identification and, and making sure that they're using the, the appropriate protocols.
You, you read my mind. That was the next question. That's all I got. Thank you. Very nice presentation.
All right. Great. Thank you again. Just two quick comments. One would be, this is a great story to tell the public, much like our restoration for Lagunitas Creek, getting the word out that our, our watershed continues to be a good place for the northern spotted owl to continue living. But the other one would be, are you tracking it all? Or is there an impact to the barred owl in our neighboring areas like Northern California? Is that being tracked? Kind of moving towards our direction type data, I guess?
Uh, are we tracking the influx of barred owls? Yes. Yeah. And so one, one thing that we have been working on lately, we're, we're constantly, you know, hearing reports from the public of where, or not constantly, but when, when people hear about barred owls, there's, there's a place online where they find contact information for who to, who to report their sightings to. Potentially spotted owl biologists are picking them up or are detecting them during surveys. So there's potential for that as well. Point Blue is currently working on a project with the National Park Service where we're actually mapping, we're gathering data from Sonoma and Napa Counties and barred owl detections and location information there to look at the relative risk of barred owls to spotted owls in Marin. And this is in concert with all the other risks. So we're looking at that whole list that I said, you know, climate change, genetic isolation, sudden oak death. We're looking at all of those threats in concert and, and developing a vulnerability assessment for the northern spotted owl in Marin County. And I think that will probably be of interest to Marin Water once that project is complete. But we are hoping to kind of assess what's known in the literature of, about all of these threats. And what are the relative threat here in Marin County? And barred owls and mapping the barred owl locations, especially the ones nearby and, and in the neighboring counties is, is one piece of that project.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Terry, public comment?
Yes, we have several. The first is Ms. Linda Bolt. And then after Ms. Bolt, oh, I apologize, Ms. Bolt, what happened? There we go. After Ms. Bolt is Mr. Larry Minikis. And then there's a couple more after. Hello, Ms. Bolt. Okay. Mr. Larry Minikis then?
Well, thank you for the presentation and the comments pretty much segue with what I was going to mention, which is, it, should there be, or is there an action plan for an invasive species like the barred owl to come in here? Because we've seen what happens with turkeys here as another invasive. And, and we've seen how it's exploded. I did a little research prior to this meeting to see if creating barred owl houses would be effective so that you could isolate them. And it's so, so. Maybe, maybe not. They sometimes will and they sometimes won't go to those homes. But I think, as you're mentioning, for Marin County, not just the water district, to have an action plan for this invasive species, I think is critical to protecting our NSOs here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minikis. Ms. Bolt?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, how are you? Hey, I had a couple of questions. We're here in the Cascade Canyon area and in the and in Fairfax. And there's a, a big change taking place by the Board of Supervisors to shift the trails around here at the bottom of Weetake. That would go right through a 750 foot area where several dusky footed wood rats are. And I'm just wondering about a couple of questions. They will have to be either disassembled or removed. And of course, that is the number one food source of the northern spotted owl. And it's night riding, the ice facility is also allowed here in this part of the Atlantic parts of New York and Spazo. So is there, I, I, any way to, couple of, I'm a little question. Is there any way to eliminate the night riding? So that the, the ice facility don't go right through the dinner table of the northern spotted owl and right through the, within five, 10 feet of the dusky footed wood rats nests. And also a couple of other questions, taking, harming and disturbing of the northern spotted owl. I'd love to, for actually the definition of those terms in that regard. And if you guys have ever heard of a, of a dusky footed wood rat, that's then removed, disassembled and then actually rehurited or reused by the dusky footed wood rats. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speakers we have are Laura Sharaton, Barbara Salzman. Go ahead, Ms. Sharaton.
Hi, thank you so much for this wonderful information. Thank you, Renee. I have had northern spotted owls on my property, on my porch. And I have many dusky footed wood rat nests on our property. And I was wondering if you ever include private property, especially ones that have been known over time, to have northern spotted owls. And, and I want to segue on to the request for getting the night riders out and the concerns that I have about the dark skies that need to, and the impacts of lights on northern spotted owls. And I want to thank Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Smith for asking the questions about how to protect them and how to increase their numbers. And the other piece of information I want to provide to the group if they haven't seen it is that the U S Fish and Wildlife Service has a comprehensive list of all of the anthropogenic decibel level sounds and their impacts and limitations on what northern spotted owl should be exposed to. So those are all hopefully helpful in protecting the species. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Salzman, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I, thanks Renee, another good job. I had a couple of comments and then a question. First of all, I was recently shown a photograph of one outside of a barred owl outside of somebody's window in San Elmo, actually. So I will, I guess, report that as soon as I get off here. But a couple of, yeah, it was right in there, you know, you could see it clearly through the window. It was amazing. Some of us are concerned about the possible impacts of, of clearing understory vegetation for fire suppression on the wood rat population. Some of us have thought of actually getting some studies done and, and that is something that the water district might want to take a look at. Secondly, the stewardship plan might be a good place to insert some, some recommendations for the spot that would enhance spotted owl protection. There's not, not an awful lot in that plan about direct benefit to hab, to habitats. And my question is, is regarding a recommendation or suggestion on page 15 of your report, which says that barred owl inventory surveys would be useful to gather baseline information throughout Marin Water lands, including in forested areas, not currently surveyed for northern spotted owl or dead, dead is lacking. And I was going to suggest, or I will, I am suggesting to the directors that you consider adding that to, to the surveys that are, you're already contracted for. Thanks.
Thank you. I have two more speakers, Ms. Nona, Nona and Phil Sauter.
Yeah, I can't help reminding us that this year we're celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Endangered Species Act. We've been celebrating in a way all, all year, but the official date is December 28th. And that was the, the day that President Nixon came out of seclusion in San Clemente, where he was in seclusion from Watergate and signed the Endangered Species Act and called it one of the great steps forward in protecting wildlife. Nixon was nothing if not pragmatic. And he saw his environmental consistency growing during that period, that inflection period, the late 60s and 70s. So nonetheless, you should also be grateful that we don't have the, the, the timber wars that won the listing of the northern spotted owl occurred in the northern range, not here. And so we're the beneficiaries of those wars, which is hard to remember now, the climbing the trees and so forth, and all that went on in the, in the northern range, in the timber country that made it possible. Even there, they're still losing them at the rate of about 3% a year. Barred owl being one of the major, major victims, predators. Sorry, that's the wrong word. One of the main threats. So be grateful that we have an endangered species act. There's a wonderful, wonderful article about it in the Sierra Magazine, the current one, which talks about what it's accomplished and then what the threats are. So honor the northern spotted owl as a remembrance of the, of the endangered species act. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Phil Sauter, please.
Yeah. Yes. Thanks for a great presentation. It's a real point of pride to see the care expressed by staff and the board for the other species who rely on our watershed. Many thanks to all who carry on this great work. And I'm grateful for Director Sansom suggesting that this is a story that should get out to the public. We can and should be very proud of our stewardship of the watershed.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the Lagunitas Creek Enhancement Plan Update.
Well, good afternoon, Directors. Jonathan Kaler, Fisheries Program Manager. Good to see you all again. Just here to provide a informational, relatively quick update on the Lagunitas project. And I can, I can come kind of sum it up in, in a very short sentence to say that we're just on track. We've, we've, we've been giving you a lot of information lately, but just wanted to check in kind of on progress to date and next steps. As you recall, the project includes 13 total sites. We've been focusing a lot on phase one, which are these upstream eight sites. And the statistics are there, but essentially this is a major undertaking that we're planning for the next couple of years in Lagunitas Creek. The design approach hasn't really changed. We've made various tweaks based on feedback from the agencies, based on feedback from the Lagunitas TAC and, and other experts in this field. But I take that to mean that it's a good design. It's, it is what the stream needs. And it's, it's essentially adding large wood and ballasting that, that wood with boulders to keep it in place. And then adding gravel to create this more complex habitat that the fish need. And really the diagram you see here is, is very similar to the diagram we've seen kind of all along. We've, like I said, made some minor adjustments, but for the most part, we're, we're sticking to this original approach. So the project being as complex and large as it is, it's required pretty extensive environmental review. As I updated at, at a previous meeting, we were granted an exemption from CEQA, which was great, saved us time and money. Since this project is getting some federal funding from the U S Bureau of Reclamation, NEPA will need to be completed. And that's actually being done through our funding partner. The U S Bureau of Reclamation is taking that on. So they're currently preparing that document with a lot of the information we've collected as part of our initial studies. We've had tribal consultation with the Federated Indians of Greatin Rancheria that's ongoing. And that's really just to make sure that their requirements and state parks requirements, since this is being implemented on state parks lands are consistent with what they want. And they're, they're really, you know, on board with the project and aware of what is happening there. And then in terms of permits, just recently this week and last week, we submitted our, our applications for these are kind of our standard three, the section 401, the section 404, and a 1600 permit from the various agencies. So that's all happening right now. We're hopeful that those will get reviewed slash approved early next year. And we can use that when we go to bid. As I mentioned, we've been, you know, updating you on the, on the grant picture. We're in really good shape funding wise for phase one. We essentially have funding to fully implement phase one. As is, we've requested planning funding for phase two. That is through the Department of Fish and Wildlife's FRGP or Fisheries Restoration Grant Program. There's a letter missing in the slide. We haven't heard back. We'll hear back probably in February, whether that was successful or not. If, if it's not successful, then we'll sort of step up our grant writing efforts again and go after funding to get that, get that going as well. But right now I think we're in really good shape in terms of funding phase one. So next steps, we're anticipating the 90% designs and specs to be done the end of this month. A hundred percent designs, basically the full package from our consultant by March. And February slash March, somewhere in there, we're going to be coming back to the board to request authorization to go after, or to open up a competitive bid process for construction and construction management contractors. And depending on, including northern spotted owl surveys, which is a nice tie-in with the last presentation, depending on whether those are present within the project area, which I don't think we think they're there, but we will see. We will be constructing sometime between June and October of next year. And at this point, we're hoping to get it done in one construction season, but it certainly could go into 2025 and still be on track in terms of permits and all of the other authorizations we have. So that's it. Almost a pretty short presentation.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Jonathan. We'll go ahead. Board member comments. We'll start with Larry Russell this time. Hey, come back. Director Smith?
Sorry, sorry. I got there.
No problem.
Switch back. I'm, I'm cool. It's a good presentation and keep up the good work. It's been working great. They're not getting washed out. So couldn't be better.
Yeah, we could just copy known as comments from the last one and repeat it here. You know, there's no doubt that the Endangered Species Act is critical for us. And we're following through with Coho and with spotted owl and other species. So I'm proud of our stewardship of this land and it's, it's a unique thing for a water agency to be focused on and we're doing it well. Thank you.
Ron Chief?
Thanks, Jonathan. You know, it's, it's, I think in, in previous presentations, we've discussed that this could be a very important activity for others to learn from, you know, if we have great success here, ideally there are methods that are going to be replicated in other places. In, in that light, and I know we've spoken about this in the past. Do you feel like we're, we're developing a good strategy for understanding the impacts of this effort? I mean, certainly you can do before, after comparisons of fish populations. Are there any way to include comparisons with creeks in the area that, that are not going through the same restoration process? Something that would strengthen the evidence for the approach and make it less likely to be supported and taken up by others?
Yeah, we, we have to, I fully agree. We have to be careful balancing sort of our resources and sort of what we can do versus what we want to do in terms of learning from the project. I've reached out to UC Berkeley and they're certainly aware of our project and other universities. So there's a research opportunity there. For our own purposes, our permits do have For our own purposes, our permits do have fairly specific monitoring requirements. And we will learn a lot about how the structures perform, how the materials we put in the channel move around, whether, you know, certain configurations work better than others. In terms of tying it back to fish numbers, it's always tricky because the, the life cycle is just so complex that, you know, we've talked about this, that, you know, we, we could do our best and yet the ocean is half of their life cycle completely out of our control. So as much as we can isolate the freshwater portion of their, their life cycle and our, our tagging efforts and our monitoring efforts definitely inform that I think about as well as they could. Yeah, I, I think we're, we're, we're thinking along those same lines and we'll continue to explore those as we go through the project.
Yeah, just, I, I think we'd also, we had noted the potential for collaboration with university research groups previously. If there's any way to, to follow up or stimulate interest in those possibilities. I think the, the effort there might have good pay, payback in terms of expanding again, the implementation of this type of work. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, along with that line of, of conversation, it obviously research partnerships can generate a lot of free, I don't want to say free work, but add a lot of valuable information at a lower cost than if we did it ourselves. But maybe to Ron Chief's point a little bit about how do we measure progress? And maybe you could say a little bit about what you think are the limiting factors for production. I know we can't control what happens in the ocean, but, and I know this is a little bit of a leading question because we've talked about this, but for the benefit of others, like why, why are we doing this? Why are we doing the work that we are that you just talked about? And how do you, and how do you think that fits with meeting a need?
Yeah. So if, I think if we could go back in time, say 300 years pre-development, pre-dam, pre-everything, and look at Lagunitas Creek as a redwood forest stream, it would not look the way it looks now. I think it would have significantly more wood. It would have much more diversity in terms of pools and then shallow spawning riffles and then pools and spawning riffles. And what we see now is just a simplification. It's taken that complex, complex habitat and essentially distilled it down to areas that are just lacking that. And, and that is the, the idea is to fill in, because we still have little patches of that good habitat, but it's really to fill in the places where that's lacking. So yeah, just, you know, more spawning opportunities for fish. So physically our structures are going to create, you know, probably 10 more actual spawning riffles. That's, you know, times some number of fish that will spawn there. That's just in Phase One, going to repeat that in Phase Two. You could repeat this downstream if, you know, we desire. So I think just creating new physical habitat is the single largest factor here. But, but also yeah, cover for juveniles that then when they hatch, they have a place to hide. Food opportunities, feeding opportunities for the juvenile. We're creating more productive stream ecosystem. So that creates a more productive food web. And so all of these things, I think, kind of snowball on each other. And, and hopefully 20, 30, dare I say 50 years from now, we're going to look a lot more like what this creek historically would have looked like.
I think it'd be really, oh, sorry, Sean, you're gonna.
Yeah, I'm just going to say in terms of monitoring success or the metrics of it, I just want to remind the board that the TM, the Water Board, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, wrote a TMDL for Lagunitas Creek and they identified a specific target for large wood in a stream like that. And they compared that to other streams in North Coast area. And that's the target in which this design is being based off of. So we're trying to get back to this historic loading of wood and gravel based on those studies that looked at various stream systems that were similar.
Yeah, I, I think if we, you know, if the data exists, I suspect it does. If over time we can show, we could just track time versus, you know, rearing habitat, spawning habitat, you know, pool cover, the pool depth, there's lots of different metrics of habitat. But if we can show how over time we are increasing all those things, I think that's like a great graphic of showing progress toward, towards restoration. One, one picture says a thousand words. I want to just also flag with the statutory exemption for restoration projects. This is for Adrian, which is, that's a fairly new program that's meant to accelerate restoration projects. And, and I know that there's been interest from the state to identify great examples of, of that exemption being used to do exactly this kind of work. So I think there's not only a good story, but there's, there's an interest in that I know CDFW and other agencies want to show what can be done with that. Because accelerating this work is really, really important. In terms of funding, I don't know if you folks have considered going to CDFW for their cannabis funds, because that's a pretty big pot of money that has been underutilized. And, and, and I think there's interest in finding, they're just not getting as many applicants because there's been a sense that it's only tied to cannabis remediation, but it's actually broader, more broadly available for cannabis affected watersheds. So I think worthy of looking at, because I think there's a lot of money there. And I'll stop there. Thanks. Great work, guys.
Thank you. I just want to highlight a couple of things on the project. And I would encourage anyone, especially with kids, to go out and take a walk and see the work that's being done because it's visible and you can see it going on. And it's, it's really neat to see as we remind or start to, I guess, educate the population of what the creek should be looking like. So really great opportunity. But also this is a really good example of a regional project, you know, not just the state level for the funds, but locally, this district is really in partnership with the Lagunitas Technical Advisory Group, which is a really good group to help partner with this. So appreciate you continuing to engage in that group and then taking into their consideration as we look to further implement the project. So thank you very much. Terry, any public comment?
Yes, Ms. Nona Dennis, please.
Yeah, I want to follow up, Muddy, on your comment about the CEQA exemption, because I was interested to see that. This, to my knowledge, this is the first time in Marin County that an agency has taken advantage of the, of the statutory exemption that was instituted a couple of, past a couple of years ago. There's always been a categorical exemption in the guidelines for CEQA for restoration projects of less than an acre. So this was a kind of a long time in coming. And I've been tracking it around the sort of around the state. It's sort of coming from the, from the Secretary for Resources on down. And there's a big move is it's called the, it's called the, let's see, what do we call it?
Green, green. Cutting the green tape.
Thank you. Cutting the green tape. And this always, of course, arouses, you know, the bile to come up in the CEQA mavens that we are. Oh, wow. No public involvement here is going to skew our bias. In fact, this is going to be kind of interesting. I, I can see that it already has bypassed us. The public didn't know about it. But it's an interesting example. You may be able to use it again when you have some other kind. Right now, you can take advantage of the, of the kind of a general permit approach that the Water Board is taking and also Fish and Wildlife Service, Department of Fish and Wildlife and so forth. So it will, it's just, it is initially kind of a sidelight, but for your purposes, you're taking advantage of something that is really being pushed throughout the state in order to accelerate, accelerate restoration projects. So thanks for, for, for including that in the presentation. Very interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. There are no further speakers.
Matt, I have another question.
Yep, go for it, Larry.
How long will it take us to get back to the status of the creek before these woody debris were removed, if we know?
So the, as Sean alluded to, the, the levels that we are putting wood into the channel will achieve what historically was there. That's the, these are the targets that were set forth in the, the TMDL. Long-term, you know, it, it would still be good for just wild wood, if you will, just trees that fall in to sort of rack up on that. But that, we should achieve it basically from the, the moment the project's done.
And to be clear, that's for the section of creek that we're doing restoration and through Samuel P. Taylor. So the Fisheries Department here does do a large woody debris survey biannually?
Every five years, but at the minimum.
And so that is something that we can continue to use to see progress in the entire system for that type of restoration.
So my question was, how long? Is it just this project or we're there?
No, we'd have to do this project a few more times.
Okay. So it was a pretty big job when they went through and pulled all the stuff out, huh?
There was an era where that's what we did, not us, but just, you know, generally society for flood control concerns and other concern.
Sean, Sean, I know it's, it's a civil engineer's approach to this situation is you, you get the water off the land as fast as possible. That, that's what they were doing is streamlining. You know, in LA, you see the result of the concrete line, the channels to make them the fastest possible. Don't let nature interfere. I fully appreciate how it got done. It's just unfortunate it did get done. That's it, Matt.
Great. Thank you. So move on. Thank you, Jonathan. Move on to the next item, which is the California Conservation Corps annual contract.
Good afternoon, committee members. Sean Horn, Watershed Resource Manager. So the item before you is an annual contract that we do with the California Conservation Corps. This is kind of nested under a sponsor agreement that we established with them in 2017. And so that allows us to do kind of these annual work contracting directly with the CCC, which is a state agency that provides workforce development opportunities for at-risk communities throughout California. And we have been utilizing them for decades on the watershed to help with not just vegetation fuels and wildfire related issues, but also with trail maintenance. You know, historically even the, before the seas were there, there was a civilian conservation corps that had a, a large, you know, footprint or fingerprint on the watershed and developing some of those trails and other recreational facilities that are there. So today we're asking for a review and referral of the 2024 contract with the seas for an amount of $207,000. And I'll just note that though during COVID, we had to adapt how we utilize the seas and they started camping on the watershed at the old Girl Scout camp next to Sky Oaks, which reduced the total cost of the contract and made it a little bit more efficient in terms of getting the crews to the project sites every morning. Because previously we had been spending, we had to pay for them to camp locally and then commute into work every day from that site. So that's been an efficiency we've been carrying forward in this, in this work. And specifically, this contract will fund supporting BIFIP implementation. That'll relate to broom management, to pile burning operations and to some of our forestry restoration actions. And also Azalea Hill Trail Restoration Work in the form of decommissioning and developing some of the hiking trail up and over Azalea Hill. Both those are being funded in part by grants. So we have an Azalea Hill grant that's funding some of that work. And we also have a Cal Fire Forest Health Grant that we're in the final year of spending down that will fund a portion of this CCC contract. And then the remainder will come out of our BIFIP implementation budget. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sean. Ron Chief will start on this side.
Thank you, Sean. No, that all sounds good to me.
Just quick order of scale question. For that 200 and, I can't remember exact number, 200 some thousand dollars. How much work do we get out of that?
So we get seven spikes and a spike is about a 10-day period where they come and camp on the watershed and do work over that period of time. So they'll have a crew of about 14 people working for those seven spikes. So it's a pretty significant labor force, you know, directed at our projects during that period of time. The trick is always kind of scheduling around, you know, potential projects that they have relating to natural disasters, maybe a wildfire that they're asked to go support or a flood event. The seas are kind of engaged in that. So, you know, we do work kind of adaptively with them to get them on the watershed for these projects.
Okay, thank you. I mean, needless to say, that's an incredible return on investment. And so I really encourage us to figure out ways to, to make that more part of our work if, because we have lots to do and to the extent that we can get the work done with the sea's support, I think is really huge. Will that funding also include the WSP, the Watershed Stewards Program?
We have a different contract for WSP and the Watershed Stewardship Program, right? Supports our fisheries monitoring work and we do that separately. So separate. And then I'll just note on the funding piece, you know, we are responding to two grants currently for CCNB and CCC for additional crew time for these types of projects in fiscal year 25.
Thank you. I, I really support that. And, and, and you mentioned in terms of having the seas camped on our lands to make, because that's what we needed to do during COVID. Is that something that we should be exploring to do on a, like on a managed, regular basis? I mean, we have a savings in terms of probably of terms of time of, you know, the less transit time folks have, the more work we get. Let alone does it make it more attractive to, to get sea contracts and so forth? So do you have a thought about?
That's the standard process now for them to camp for every spike. I mean, we basically set up the spot near the Sky Oaks Ranger Station, the old Girl Scout camp with the facilities they need and they're self-sustaining from there.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you.
Director Russell.
I'm cool. It sounds great. I think it's a wonderful investment and a wonderful return on investment.
Thank you very much, Sean. I would say, sounds like we've got, we're getting a lot more work hopefully out of this. So if there's anything else we need to do in terms of expanding the BIFIP acreage and things like that, please let us know what we can do to support that. And then I'll keep planting the seed for workforce housing at some point to see if we can further take advantage of this, of this great resource. So if I can get a motion to recommend this for, or refer to the board for full approval, please.
So moved, recommend that the CCC contract go to the board for future approval. Second.
Okay. Any public comment?
There are none.
Great. Thank you very much.
None.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up is item E. That's the update on the Watershed Recreation Management Plan feasibility study. And before we get started on this, I just want to acknowledge that this has been an item of interest for the public for a long time now. And I'd like to also acknowledge the, the time the staff has been putting in to move this forward as an ancillary piece of everything they're doing. You saw today, we, between fish, birds, and now just getting some additional workforce to our lands to be able to manage for wildfire suppression. The plate is very full in the watershed district, so, excuse me, the watershed committee area. So Sean, thank you again for you and your team for continuing to move this forward. And I know that we're at a point today where I think quite a few of us, we're hoping we'd be a little further down the road. But based on everything that's going on, the timing to get things right, to make sure that we're doing it the right way, definitely support the way things are moving through with this process and excited to hear where we're at right now for it.
Yeah, appreciate that. I'll just note, we moved the December Watershed Committee to the 12th and maybe that impacted our ability to get to where we wanted to be for this meeting. But we are on, on kind of track to get our draft Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study to our February Watershed Committee meeting. So that's what we're charting towards at this point. And today we're going to give you an update on kind of how we're structuring that document. So it's kind of an opportunity to give a preview of what that will look like when it, it comes out. And so for this presentation, we'll talk about the planning objective, which we've presented before, talk about the planning feasibility study and the process that we've been going through. And then really highlight the strategic opportunities that were identified through this conversation with the community about actions we could take moving forward. So we started this out to evaluate the current patterns of watershed visitation while collecting community input on current conditions and future desired conditions. When to consider opportunities for continuing to support safe, inclusive access with an emphasis on protecting the watershed's unique biodiversity habitat and water quality. And then I'll just mention that we are joined by Alta Planning and Design on, online today. So they've been working with us on not only developing the document, but, you know, coordinating and hosting the community workshops that are informing this process, as well as the visitor census survey. So the workshops that we held for the last few months were really designed to provide input into kind of key sections of this document and aligned with how we're bringing the final form of the report together. So this is just an outline. I would just say, you know, focusing on the top headers is just the format that we're moving forward with in terms of structure of the document. So an introduction, going into the watershed setting, and the next few slides I'll get into more detail. And then presenting the visitor survey and census data, talk about the community workshops and then identifying and discussing some of the opportunities that are identified through, through the process. So in the introduction of the feasibility study, we're really providing an overview of the planning processes at large, discussing the goals of, you know, what we are setting out to do. And then kind of putting that within the context of the water district as a, as a water provider for the community and that's been open to the public since its inception. For the watershed setting, we're, you know, we're not, we're trying to be detailed, but not overly comprehensive or repeat documents that we already have. But we are trying to outline kind of our roads and trail system, referencing back to the existing 2005 roads and trails plan that we have, talking about some of the environmental setting of the condition of the watershed, discussing the biodiversity that's there and the monitoring work that's ongoing, and then reviewing our existing stewardship programs. So you can kind of think about this as just providing everyone with the background information to understand how we're thinking about the community's involvement in this landscape. So the community workshops kind of evolved as we started this planning process. Our consultant, you know, worked with us adaptively to respond to interest to have more community engagement. So we. you know, worked with us adaptively to respond to interest to have more community engagement. So we expanded the number of community member meetings we are having to inform this document. We included site visits to the watershed to help inform that. And then we did visitor census surveys to connect with people in the field. We also connected with individual stakeholder groups throughout the process. So online on our website, you can get all the details and all the background documents around the community workshops. But in the feasibility study, we'll be summarizing what we talked about at each one and trying to identify kind of the opportunities that were discussed and brought forward from the community and how those kind of feed into our final strategic opportunities at the end of the document. In section four, we go into this watershed census survey data and present this as a whole to give an understanding of what we learned from the 2013 survey and then the updated 2023 survey. Looking at them comparatively about differences and changes. They're they're pretty consistent, interestingly enough, in terms of responses, but we did see some improvements in terms of how people felt about road conditions, trail conditions, how they were getting along with other visitors. And generally, one of the the key things is, you know, do you feel safe when you're visiting the watershed? And overwhelmingly, we did hear from people that they did feel safe. The strategic opportunity section, what we're doing in the draft document is really trying to tie these opportunities back to what we heard in those community workshops. There's a lot here, and this is just an initial preview of what's going to be presented in the document. And there's a lot of a lot of work to be done in these bullet points that are coming on the next slides. And they might seem fairly straightforward and simple, but it comes with a lot of planning work and a lot of capacity. So in stewardship was kind of the foundational element that we wanted to be looking at here as we talked about this feasibility study and what the community could do to support the district. So we have habitat restoration programs. We identified there was an opportunity to expand those into trail volunteer opportunities for stewardship. And we've started redeveloping some of our trail volunteer opportunities. We actually have some folks in the audience today that are watershed stewards and our Grizzly Corps fellows who are helping us do an inventory of trails and volunteer related projects. They also participated in a trail training that we did with Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship this last year. And that really is kind of a model for how we're thinking about a trail ambassador volunteer training to build skills within our community to help us with trail maintenance. We're also identifying the One Tam Watershed Stewardship Events as opportunities for connecting underserved communities to the watershed. And this is something that's being identified in the One Tam Strategic Plan. And we're thinking about how we can, as an organization and a land manager, support it to bring folks to the watershed. We have existing wildlife docent programs for yellow-legged frogs and turtles. We know those will continue and we're thinking about how do we either enhance those or bring other opportunities to folks who are interested. Natural resource interpretation training is something that our Rangers Department has identified as a key component of the new Ranger Trainee Program. And they've identified a certification program to have those folks go through to build the skills to have that outreach component of their job when they're in the field on a daily basis and being able to provide that nexus to the community. And then in our roads and trails plan in 2005, we identified a number of non-system trails that could be decommissioned and restored. You know, we've learned a lot from doing those projects and we understand that, you know, social trails exist because people are using them and there's a need to kind of prioritize what we can do over the next five years with the capacity the district has, but also in tandem with planning opportunities for trails. So folks can actually use the areas they are already using. So that's kind of the example of Azalea Hill where we married a project to provide access and an opportunity to close trails simultaneously. So the second section we're talking about, or strategic opportunities is visitor outreach and services. And so kiosks and signage was a, you know, thing we heard a lot about throughout the workshops. So we really appreciate and understand that there's an opportunity here to improve our messaging around water supply, kind of that core mission of the district, but also the natural resources on the watershed through doing an improvement of our watershed signage and kiosk stations. And that's a good refresher that we're kind of timed to do. So watershed visitor maps, we also identified that through our discussions, we do have maps. They're not modern. They could be GPS enabled. That would help Rangers and supporting kind of visitor support services if they get lost and they had access to this. So that's an easy update that we've identified through this process. And then creating Ranger quarterly events. So Rangers have historically done hikes on the watershed where they talk about the history of the watershed in different ways. And as we build that kind of natural resource interpretation skill set into their their work group, we're thinking that we'd have quarterly events to allow invite people out to engage with them and learn more about the watershed. We've also started to explore self-guided natural resource interpretation offerings. And we did this around Lake Lagunitas where we had been doing forestry work and tried to educate people about some of the other sudden oak or the some of the other phytopler impacts that we've seen in Madrones and the work that we're doing around those. We developed some of those for our prescribed fire upon Rock Springs. So, you know, there's opportunities for us to continue to enhance our messaging in that way. The third strategic opportunity really relates to our watershed facilities, policies and plans. And this is, you know, just a initial bullet list that'll be expanded as we go into each one of these in more detail. We do have a program to provide watershed parking passes at the library. So you can check those out like a book to get there. Just acknowledging that we're going to continue that and look for ways to enhance it. And then that we might have an opportunity to identify kind of a low income parking pass discount. So a way that we can provide more access to folks who might be in need. Slow zones have been, you know, an important feature on the watershed. And so looking at strategic locations to continue to expand those. And then we heard a lot about, right, trail use and multi-use trail use and how we can evaluate and consider various trail sharing strategies or various different modes on trails. So we identified a pilot study as an opportunity for something that we could advance as a next step to evaluating different techniques for trail sharing and trail use. And that would let us explore some kind of concepts before we kind of integrate those into a potential road and trails plan update. So we are identifying a need to update our 2005 roads and trails plan. There's kind of modern trail building techniques that we could build into that. Get the environmental compliance done to support future projects in the way of restoration and trail planning. And then we're also identifying a framework for watershed trail project zoning. So we reviewed through the public workshops, the zoning concept for protecting resources and providing access. And so we've developed a framework to kind of inform how we would approach a trail project. And then lastly, we identified and heard from the community that there's accessibility needs. And so we wanted to think through that in terms of developing a priority project list for ways that we can improve some of our facilities from an accessibility standpoint. And then also think about updating our other power-driven mobility device policy, which is something we've explored in the past as part of our e-bike CAC and we'd be bringing forward here again. In terms of adaptive management and the fourth strategic opportunity, we talked a lot about continuing to do visitor census updates every 10 years and kind of just formalizing that. So it's a nice check-in that we're acknowledging is beneficial for us to do. And we have a framework for doing that. So kind of putting that at the top and then continuing with our biological monitoring data and supporting our staff's involvement in the One Tam Peak Health Report, really recognizing that we do a lot of good data and we heard data collection and we heard about that with northern spotted owls. But really, when we broaden that beyond our own boundaries, it's more meaningful. And we've seen and learned from that collaboration through One Tam and have developed the Peak Health Report. And we'll continue to support the development of that. I think the next one is scheduled to come out next, this next fiscal year. And then in terms of roads and trails, we have a program for early detection, rapid response within our One Tam partnership. There's some limitations capacity wise for that program long term. And we're thinking that that's a real need for us to look at internally about how we can continue to support invasive plant management. And if you think about like, what would we have done if we found broom early enough? And that's kind of what we're saying here is let's have the capacity to, you know, continue to maintain our invasive plant surveys along all of our roads and trails at the frequency that we need to ensure that we're getting in front of any kind of new issues. And then evaluate capacity for carrying out possible updates to our roads and trails plan and the priorities within those plans. So if we do move forward with updating our 2005 document, doing that within the lens of what does the district have the capacity to do over some time period. And so that's kind of just acknowledging that we built the BIFIP in that way, providing kind of a five-year plan for what we could do and how we'd achieve that and acknowledging that's what we'd be needing to do. And I think the last thing in the roads and trails plan, we identified classification systems for our trails. We have that classification system. There's one classification system that was left for future use. And so we'd be exploring what that means through those pilot studies and then through an actual update to the roads and trails plan. So next steps, we did establish a special watershed committee meeting in February. That's going to be an evening meeting on the 29th, and then we'll have the March 21st Watershed Committee Meeting. We're on track to have that draft Recreation Management Plan feasibility study likely on the website before the 29th meeting. And then we'd provide about a month for folks to look through it, become comfortable with it. And then we'd be reviewing and discussing it further at the March 21st meeting. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Sean, thank you very much. Larry, I'll start with you on this one.
I'm cool. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. This is probably one of the biggest hot button topics for our community. Our watershed habitat and trail use is is a top of mind of many, many thousands of folks and very important species that we're here to protect. I kind of wish we called this instead of just a recreation plan, we call it a recreation and habitat and watershed, you know, sustenance program. I'm super proud of our effort here to bring the spotted owl habitat and the co-host salmon Lagunitas Creek efforts to the front of this meeting. I think that shows the importance that as an organization that we that we have on looking at this as a holistic perspective. And it seems like that we're moving forward with some ideas around pilot programs of trails and and other other recreation use. But I, you know, as we go forward and if we go forward with these kinds of programs, I think the idea of your adaptive management or thoughtful monitoring of the impact of these will be critical. And to that extent, I have a proposal that I haven't discussed with anyone on the board or the staff, although I mentioned it to you coming in, Sean, but you know, I don't love the idea of permits for folks for that are using the the trails. I think that can be not inclusive or maybe exclusive. But it did come up with a public comment on a board meeting a week or two ago where someone said that, well, why are why are we paying for, you know, maintaining all this watershed? Well, I just want to pay for my water and what's going on here. And I had an idea that I'd like to propose and maybe if you guys like it, we can, we can second it to have the staff research this, which would be to put a QR code on our trail heads. And and specifically, if we do pilots, that we put QR codes right on those trail heads so that people can donate money. And that money could go directly towards trail maintenance. That could go directly towards lower income use, maybe the parking lot fee that you're looking to to reduce for folks that might have that need and or use it as an alternative revenue source for our low-income customers since our rates cannot fund some of the grant programs that we have. I love the idea of having that kind of voluntary payment that someone could hold up their phone and contribute $10 and that $10 could go directly towards trail maintenance, habitat preservation, and possibly we could engage with the Access for Bikes folks and with the Marine Coalition for Bikes and 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 the and MCL, who's represented here in the room, who I've talked to several folks who are supportive of this kind of effort. That if we can help bring additional funding as we think through this recreation plan, this habitat monitoring and adaptive management plan, this could help make it more palatable and could help maybe actually prove that we can we can coexist together. And as we think through the pilot trails that might be used, I highly encourage Matt, maybe you as chair of this committee and Sean and others to get together in a room at the same time with the bike folks and with Nona and or Larry and or Terry Thomas or others and go through each one of these proposals and talk it through. See, see what you like and what they don't like and make sure everyone feels that they're heard and understood. And and now that you have another couple of months to do that, I think that'd be great. Those are my thoughts.
Right. Thank you. Rajiv.
Yeah. First, thanks, Sean, for the update. You've had us on pins and needles for a long time. So I'm glad to see that we're getting to the end of this process. I think it's worth noting that a lot of the issues that we're hoping to address, including some that Jed brought up, are ones that have been debated in various settings, including in this boardroom for many, many years without resolution. So I hope we are moving to decision-making on these on these points. I don't know that everyone's going to be pleased with every decision, but I think it is time for decisions. You know, Jed brought up the the cost of some of these efforts and like all of us, you know, I've heard a lot about a lot of questions about the costs associated with recreation. And and I think, you know, one one element to that is it's not really clear that much of the investment on the watershed is actually to ensure the the integrity of our water supply. And I'm not, I'm not convinced, or I'm not I don't fully understand the marginal costs for supporting recreation onto what we already have to invest in the watershed to ensure you know, a productive watershed that is safe from fire and vandalism, other other activities that we don't want up there. So maybe some, you know, but you know, it may be in conjunction with Jed's proposal to think about innovative ways to fund recreation activities. It would be helpful for us to have a sense of what the marginal costs are for some of the things we're talking about. And so if that's something that could be included, some some clarity on on what 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 are the marginal costs for supporting recreation on top of what we are already committing committed to doing? That may help inform strategies that we use to address potential funding gaps. Thanks.
Monkey.
Boy, there's so much here and and we all are looking forward to the the final presentations in the new year. I guess I want to say a couple of things. I agree with Jed on a couple of things that I think that there's confusion that our resource management and protection of endangered species and other things are not addressed here. And that I know it's it's not, it's a recreation management plan. It's not meant to cover those things. But maybe in the plan, there can be sort of a chapter or something that kind of says, here's where you go find those other things. So that people who are thinking that they might find something there can know what other documents we've got. And it just will help, I think, clarify the purpose of this plan and how it doesn't encompass everything and that there's related content there. I'd like to see you had on here, you had about habitat restoration and volunteer opportunities about maintaining them. I like to see them expanded. I personally think that the watershed is actually one of our under-recognized resources that people are paying for in their bill. It is our source of our water and foremost, we maintain it because of its supply for our water, but it is also a deeply treasured experience for many, many people, even if all you're doing is looking out, you know, at your from, you know, from your work or your home or wherever, and you're seeing a beautiful watershed instead of something that's built up or, you know, in other in that way, that it is just a really special part of of where we live. And to that end, I think that we really, I think we really do need to take a deep look at how we do interpretation of our watershed. I just so much has changed about how we talk about natural resources and and just a quick aside and case in point. I've stayed in touch with Armando Quintero, who was the board member representing the district that I now represent. And he's taken over as as the head of state parks. And one of the one of his key initiatives has been to look at how every single park talks about its park. And and historically, these things were, you know, it was very Smokey the Bear and like, you know, this very, you know, wooded naturalist sort of interpretation, which made tons of sense. But these natural resources and these places now mean something very differently as we understand our Native American heritage and and the role that 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 these places play for our local communities. And I just think that that this is for 2 million visitors who come to our watershed. We ought to look at how we message about it and make sure it's accurate for one and up to date with how we talk about natural resources. But also how we can talk about the benefit of it. And I am totally supportive of of exploring the QR code concept. I mean, if it, the cost of implementation is a is a sign and it direct deposits into the recreation fund and it doesn't take a lot to minister, like what a what a great idea for anybody who wants to just give. We should make it easy for people to to donate. I think that, you know, going to the the point of the multi-use bike access, I think there's a lot of need to bring this to a point of of decision and action. And I think that a pilot study makes sense because we that's all we can do. And I think that a pilot study makes sense because we, that's all we can do at this point in time, I think, is, is consider how would this look and how, what does it look like and what is it? I know it's all TBD since we didn't hear anything about it. So I think that, you know, taking the time that we do have now, between now and when we have a final plan to, to do some brainstorming and some, some communication with interests that really feel strongly about this, so that we can hopefully land in a place where people feel heard and that we are learning, because I think we don't know enough. I think we are driven by fear in, in this process versus being driven by like, let's see what we're worried about and how can we manage for it and address it. And so I, I really hope that whatever we do going forward is an opportunity to learn and do something different than we've done, so we can break the gridlock. And just lastly, I just want to really highlight the low income programs. I really do think that partnering with One Tam on this is a great idea and I wholeheartedly support it. Do you think we should look at, you know, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea that you can go to the library to check out something to come here, but I think that's a really circuitous way to help. And I don't know what, how else we can do it, if there's a program where people can just can, can write into us or somehow or another apply to the district to get a free parking pass. But let's try to figure out, and maybe there are other, you know, I'm sure that there are great ideas that we could find elsewhere for how we can really advance that and, and make it really easy for folks who want to visit our watershed, but you know, can't afford the parking pass. So I'll stop there.
Sean, thank you again for this. And we're so close, you know, and I, I think February seems like a long time away right now. And for me, it is as well on this, on this topic. But as we know, time flies and it'll be here before we know it, as we culminate this long journey through all this. And I want to thank the public as well for the patience as we work through it, because it has been a slog over the course of multiple years and not counting the amount of contract work or consultants that we're putting into this, but it is important. And I think if you take the user group component out of it, meaning the biker component of it, there's a lot of really good stuff in here that's going to allow us to move forward. And really what I see is modernize the use of the watershed, bring it up to what I think most of us would like to see specifically around interpretation and then facility use as well. And then really allowing people an easier conduit to come and, and give their time or their, or their money, if they're generous enough to be able to not, not supplant the funds we're using, but I think accelerate the, the opportunities we have based on our restricted budget, because our funds really are prioritized for watershed maintenance, whether it's habitat or just quality of drinking water. So if we have the opportunity to accelerate it, that's really good. But with, as we approach this February deadline, I'm in agreement with both Director Schmidt and Director Kush that I think the decision time is now for us and we have the opportunity to make some decisions that are safely impactful and that we can monitor and that we can take back, should we find anything that's detrimental to the watershed. But I really think we need to look at a pilot study that's robust enough that is manageable, but not too big, but at the same time allows us a couple of different opportunities to really understand the impacts of what any type of change in use would bring for that. And then in, and also in that with the opportunity to really finalize the, the e-bike or the electric bike component of what we've been talking about now for going on almost half a decade as we move through all this. So again, I just want to acknowledge the work that you guys are doing and all the extra gaps you're filling in on it. It's very much appreciated and look forward to the presentation in February.
Yeah. Thank you for the second money and everyone's comments. I just a couple more thoughts about this is the idea is not just to have a QR code and 10 bucks in money to fund this. I think as we, if we go forward with something like this, it's an opportunity for a tremendous engagement with our community to build hopefully an ambassador program, a stewardship program, a way to communicate with our trail users, the impact of their use, a way to help engagement and volunteering, to help understanding of, you know, what they're doing and how they can help. And so I, I think there's a real interesting opportunity for, for Adrian, our communications group, in addition to funding and then supporting the recreation and the habitat plan. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Can I just add on to that? So I just want to recognize that, that there's some themes here about interpretation and outreach and education that is maybe a little late to add. I don't think you can suddenly launch a, a whole effort and by February have a, an, a whole new communications and outreach and for interpretation assessment, but I'd like it in the plan to, to specify that we'll do that. And so that we can actually in a time-bound way, really look at that. And I agree that, that it's really is, it should be a communications thing. It should be an education process. And obviously our, all our amazing natural resource and conservation folks all have something to say and could contribute to that. And I think that that would be a, a really significant improvement. So.
Great. All right. Do you have any public commentary?
Yes, we have at least 10 so far. The first three, Bill Abright, Nona Dennis and Walter Mazurve.
Thank you, directors, for allowing me to speak and thank you, Sean and Ben, for all of your good work on this long process. I'm Bill Abright, resident of San Anselmo for 50 years. Thank you for the good water. There's no need for anyone in Marin to buy bottled water. I was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for e-bikes for seven months in 2018, and I'm a founding member of the nonprofit ebikeaccess.org. Since then, I've been to almost all of the watershed committee meetings by Zoom or in person, and I've spoken often. In 2020, when the MMWD staff proposed a very practical three-year trial period to get some real data on e-bikes, the Board of Directors at that time was unprepared for the proposal and said they did not have enough information to make a decision. Now, three years later, the district has spent $250,000 of ratepayers' money on a new recreational master plan to get more information. And I have participated in every workshop and meeting. During this period of five years, more mature mountain bikers like myself have made the transition to pedal-assist Class 1 e-bikes. Being out in nature is good for the soul, whether on foot or hoof or bike. Being Class 1 e-bikes have also provided access and inclusion to many new people who would not otherwise be able to enjoy and explore nature in this beautiful place. Number of e-bikes in my riding group, the Over the Hill Gang, with a 40-year history of riding bikes on Mount Tam, has increased to 11 out of 18. And most of the seven on acoustic bikes are much younger. This transition to Class 1 e-bikes is happening to every group of cyclists who have been riding Mount Tam for decades and we all hope to for decades more. We have had a trial period. They have not had greater impact in almost any way than regular bikes. I ride faithfully at least three times a week and I cover a lot of ground. I seldom see a ranger anywhere. To continue the unenforceable policy of treating e-bikes as illegal motor vehicles, instead of recognizing them as bicycles, like the DMV and the GG NRA have done, is to ignore the reality of our situation. There will be more riders of all walks of life utilizing Class 1 e-bikes to access our watershed in the future. Our MMWD staff has more important work to do, an enormous amount of work to do, than to make outlaws out of the residents of Marin. I urge this newly elected board to make a practical and timely decision and finally allow e-bikes the same legal access as other bicycles.
Mr. Abright, remember, please, we all have three minutes. Okay, your time's up, sir.
I'm finished.
Yep. Yep. And for the crowd, just out of respect for everybody's time with this many speakers, please make sure the three-minute timeline is respected. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I didn't know I had time.
It's okay. They follow the time. Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Nona Dennis. And then after Ms. Dennis is Walter Mazurve.
Again, I'm not going to talk about what you heard from many of us, the need to protect water, natural resources and so forth. I'm going to talk about my experience over the past eight years with trail partners, that is to say, a member of the Slow and Say Hello gang. We're a gang of maybe a half dozen, six, seven, eight. We have set up our outposts at, from Mount Burdel and Rush Creek to Diaz Ranch and Muir Beach and three places on the watershed with a huge cooperation, first from Mike Swasey and then from Sean. We've been at Phoenix Lake. We've had several outposts there. We've had outposts at Lake Loganitis and also I'm trying to think now of the third, oh, yeah, yeah, yes. The old railroad grade, West Blindale access, not right on your land, but just below it. And I have to tell you that at this point, I guess what I want to, I have real concerns about e-bikes on the watershed, but I'm not going to talk about specifics. I'm going to talk about people and their behavior. And if you want to kind of couch that, use that, put that under the rubric of outreach, then let's do that. How do people behave and what can you do to change their behavior or at least influence it in some way? We have experienced, uh, Phoenix Lake, probably the most diverse bunch of people who are having a wonderful time on the watershed, families and their kids, sometimes on bikes, sometimes on foot, people with their dogs on leash, we hope, all the way. All kinds, all kinds, probably the greatest diversity. And when we've set up our, our canopy, which says, emblazoned on it, one is Slow and Say Hello. Well, you know who that's directed toward? It's directed toward bikes, Slow and Say Hello. Then the other one says, put yourself in my shoes. That's directed at everybody. How do you behave? How does a walker accommodate somebody who's coming along on a bike? How, how do you encounter? How does the, the dog walker encounter someone coming on a bike? How, how does an equestrian, how is that person encountered by, by a bike and so on? So I guess I, I'm, I'm hoping that you can focus your time on how to make this thing called outreach really meaningful. Is it to get people to interpret more and so forth? I'm running out of time. But I think in those terms, how can you do it with your ranger staff and your limited funds? Make people responsible.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Walter, please. After Walter is Bob Mittelstadt and Debbie Raphael.
Hello. My name is Walt Mazurve. I have been a homeowner and a ratepayer in San Anselmo since 1988, which is, you know, some more than 35 years. Tomorrow is my birthday. I turn 72. And for 35, 34 and a half years of those 35 years, I have been a, I have been a mountain biker in Marin. Because of my advancing age, I find that I, if I want to, I enjoy the watershed, I also have to ride an e-bike. I've been very responsible of, I don't think of myself as a lawless hooligan. I worked for 12 years for the US Department of the Treasury. And so I guess that means that I'm somewhat law-abiding. And I think that e-mountain bikes have their place, particularly for, particularly for senior citizens, as I am now one. That's one thing. The second thing though, is that I would like to applaud and encourage the board to consider multi-use trails, shared trails. They have been very successful in other parts of Marin, namely the Big Rock Trail, the Wonderful Ponty Trail, which I encourage all of you to experience if you haven't already, the Porcupine Trail. And I think that if those efforts, if the trails are well-designed and well-built, that they will, that everyone using them will, will find great enjoyment and they will also be safe. Thank you very much.
Bob Mittelstadt and Debbie Raphael.
Good afternoon. I too am a co-founder of ebikeaccess.org. It grew out of our participation on the Community Advisory Committee. We are dedicated to the safe, responsible, environmentally sound riding of Class 1 mountain bikes on Mount Tam. I believe completely in collaboration. We have tried over the last five years, 40, 50 meetings in this room and elsewhere to collaborate. The simple reason we have been unsuccessful is that the board has not made clear that it favors e-bikes. And so when we sit down to talk with my dear friend, Nona, and others about under what circumstances would you agree to e-bikes, what we get is no, no, no. So what I would encourage the board to do is to break through and make reality out of collaboration and compromise in the truest tradition of Marin County, is to tell us that e-bikes are going to be allowed and let us work out the details. What concerns me is no one works harder than Ben, Sean and their staff. This is tremendous work. But not a word was mentioned about e-bikes and the pilot study, I fear, is not going to be about e-bikes. But if you remember, three years ago, the staff proposed a three-year, a three-year trial program for e-bikes on fire roads. It was a great, great way to break through all of this and see what would happen in three years. But the board turned it down and instead said, we're going to do the RMP. And now we're three years later, we got the RMP, nothing about e-bikes. So what have we learned? Well, there was one question. What have we learned over time? Here's what we've learned. We did a survey led by Sean and the consultants of over 1,000 visitors, three times as many hikers as bikers, because bikers didn't stop as frequently. And what we learned was that over 90% felt safe on the roads. Over 90% felt good or great about their interactions with other visitors. And over 63% of this hiker-heavy survey group favored allowing e-bikes and only 25% wanted to restrict e-bikes. So that's what we know from the people who are actually there. We can talk about anecdotes all day, but that's what the facts were. The other thing is we've had a five-year trial period, both here and on the GG NRA, officially there, unofficially here. And what we've learned is there's no material increase in accidents, no, no degrading of water quality, no increase in user conflicts. In fact, over time, the user groups are getting along better. You wouldn't know it from what you hear from these meetings, but when you're up on the mountain, you know, you don't see open warfare or the kind of thing you're, you, you hear about here. So the question I put to the board is, you know, is in five years enough? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Matt. Molly, can I, can I ask Sean one, one clarification question? Sean, when, when you refer to other power-driven mobility policy, is that a euphemism for e-bikes or is that something different?
So out of the e-bike CAC, we came forward with three recommendations, one being the limited period for trial of e-bikes. The other was an acknowledgement of an update to our other power-driven mobility device policy, because that's what we had been seeing other land management agencies throughout the Bay Area in California take an initial step to, which is to align kind of their operations under ADA with their policies for other power-driven mobility devices. And so we developed a policy and reviewed that at a board meeting and recommended that we, you know, update that policy. So that's what we'd be reviewing again is specifically to try to align those things and then more broadly talking about accessibility.
Okay, just, just, so, so that's not a euphemism for e-bike. So the, this.
It's more broad in its legal terminology.
Right.
It's more broad in its legal application than e-bikes, but it is inclusive of e-bikes. And that's the primary other powered mobility device that we would anticipate on the watershed.
So, so I do want to clarify then, according to that. So, so I do want to clarify then, according to that, e-bikes were mentioned today in your presentation.
I did mention e-bikes once.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, my name is Debbie Raphael. I'm a resident of San Rafael. Uh, and I'm here under two contexts. One is that my husband, Miles, who's here, has Parkinson's disease. And so he is allowed on the watershed on the, um, on his e-bike, but I am not allowed to go with him. And so I, it's very important to me to follow the rules. So I feel like I have a personal stake in being allowed to be on those trails with my husband. The second context is that I've worked in the environmental field, uh, for over 30 years, and I've led environmental agencies at the city, state, and county levels. And I've also served on the CAC here. And I understand the challenge of making difficult decisions, especially where someone is going to be unhappy, and in this case, probably very unhappy. I've been in that situation multiple times, and I've come to understand that there are two kinds of decisions that policymakers need to make. One is called a weather decision, whether or not e-bikes are allowed. The other is the how decision. How would we allow e-bikes on the, on these trails, on these restricted trails? I brought up this distinction five years ago when I talked to, before this body, and I warned them that, um, bringing together a community group and expecting us to get through a weather conversation is pretty impossible. Whereas asking the community to come on a how conversation is a way that we can give you productive information for your decision-making. Well, unfortunately, I got, uh, we got no such direction from the board. And the CAC spent months with staff and consultants going back and forth between weather considerations and how discussions. And at the end of that process, uh, staff came to the board with a recommendation for a three-year pilot, which you're very aware of. And frankly, I thought it was an incredibly well-crafted idea, and especially given the differences of opinions on that committee. But instead of accepting the recommendation of staff, the board at that time said, nope, we're going to do something else. We're going to do more study. We're going to vote for more study. And more study at that point, what's a recreational management plan? Well, fast forward to now, as I understand it, you don't have a recreational management plan before you. You have something called a feasibility study, which is giving you a list, a menu of options. It is not a plan. It is a menu of options that you are going to need to decide upon and prioritize. So I would like to ask you to make one of three decisions. Either decide right away that you're going to do a pilot and go and allow us to dive back into that conversation of how.
Ma'am, can you wrap it up?
Okay. And, uh, and if you need more information, please be very specific about what that information is. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to jump over to, um, the Zoom. I have Ms. Terry Thomas and then Barbara Zaltzman. Go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I really appreciate the thoughtful analysis that went, um, from Sean and his team, as well as the directors today. Really excellent comments. Um, I have three comments to make. The first is that I really support Monty and Jed's comments regarding things such as donations coming from QR codes, addressing how this plan relates to the trails plan and BFIP, and especially the interpretation and communication changes related to how we want to talk about our park. In that light, as part of both the stewardship and the visitor outreach, it would be important to include the various youth in the high schools, the recreation, um, groups, as well as the environmental groups, such as the climate action groups and bicycle teams, and addressing the communications to these interested young people so that they can also understand the values of the natural resource values of the watershed. I am a natural resource professional, and my comments will be along those lines. My second comment is that in prioritizing decommissioning, um, the trails of the non-system trails, the criteria for this needs to include and emphasize the impacts to water quality and biodiversity first, and not necessarily focus only on where people want to go, because these are truly non-system trails still. And that, bringing that brings me to the third point, which is dealing with the pilot study and, um, having enough specific information to make decisions. In this case, such as with the, um, decommissioning of trails as well, it's important to look at specific, low, specific local monitoring needs of the area to get the natural resource information, and not only rely on our large-scale landscape level monitoring countywide. For example, wildlife camera trapping before and after would be appropriate to direct towards some of these multi-use pilots. Invasive, um, invasive knowledge through the early detection, rapid response areas might be more frequent there, and sensitive plant areas such as multi-use, in these multi-use pilots, such as serpentine and wetland conditions should be monitored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Solz, uh, Barbara Zaltzman, please.
Hi. Um, thank you for hearing me today. Um, I would like to say, first of all, that I completely agree that the boards have been driven by fear. And that is not what should be driving you. You've accepted this position as being directors, and you need to do what's best for the watershed. Um, the watershed, what, what needs to be driving you, and you've said it many times, and so you need to be reminded, and you're reminding each other, uh, you need to be motivated by a protection of the watershed. And you protect the watershed, you protect our water quality by protecting habitat. That's what protects the water quality. Um, with regard to the presentation, I was glad to hear, uh, Sean's presentation. I did not pick up in, in, uh, regard to the, um, setting section that there's going to be, uh, uh, what we've been asking for, for actually years, uh, discussion and presentation on the natural resources of, of the watershed. Uh, what, what was brought up today, the spotted owls, uh, most people probably don't even know much about spotted owls and about the other important species that, that depend on the watershed. So I, I would really urge that the setting section present the resources and also talk about the impacts. You can't be expanding and, um, uh, continuing potential uses that are possibly damaging the resources. And so those two aspects need to be included in, in the document, and the setting section is probably the best place to include it. So, um, anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope you do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Amory Willis, Tracy McDermott, and Amy Worth.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm Amory Willis. I live in Sausalito. And I've been riding horses on Marin County's trails since I was eight years old, which is not really long, a long time ago. Um, my kind of request is that when considering any sort of pilot program, I think it is important that the committee remember that not only do horses matter, the safety and perceived safety of all horseback riders matter. Um, with that in mind, I also think it would be nice that when Sean and the committee chair are scheduling, um, pilot program discussions with Tom from MCBC and Nona and Larry from Marin Conservation League, that they do remember to also schedule a conversation with Amory and Linda from the Marin Horse Council. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Tracy McDermott, please. Okay, Amy Worth. And then after Amy is Linda Navi.
Hi, I'm Amy Worth. I've lived in Marin pretty much my whole life, and my mom was a naturalist, so I had time to grow up exploring the trails. Um, and I've also got a long background in business. And I admire, we've elected you, and I admire each of your contributions and hard work to make this critical, kind of mission-critical infrastructure of delivering water, you know, so, so we can survive and, you know, that we have high-quality, good public health. I think, I know there's some constituents, um, particularly the bikers, that are really pushing you for, um, a decision, but I'm actually very glad you're taking thoughtful care. Marin Municipal Water or Marin Water is not a park. It's, it's a strategic resource. And without water, we can't even live here. So I, I like, I really like the idea of, um, not being so worried about, hey, we've got to make a decision. We want to make the right decision. And I think I looked at your goals, your priorities, and every one of them is about, you know, a reliable, long-term, high-quality water supply, a cost-efficient rate structure, making any decision by taking into account the habitat and all the, the delicate balance that you have. So I guess one thing I'm worried about, um, which is a different opinion, is why are we starting a pilot, which I don't think will tell us at scale what the impact is to the environment, but why are we starting a pilot if we're not scientifically sure? I don't know if we would call it an environmental impact report, but extremely certain that it doesn't affect, uh, our ability, your ability to provide water. We've got climate change making, already making the situation much more difficult. We've got lots of additional users. So I appreciate your adhering and, and actually, I'd love to see you stack rank your eight values or your, your eight goals, because I think, you know, as a rate payer and, and a consumer and a resident who pays for your, pays for our joint infrastructure, I'd like to make sure you really can continue to provide water in the years to come. And that's a long time horizon. So, um, I appreciate you're taking this one step at a time. And, uh, I think it's, you know, it's a very difficult decision, and you're, you know, you've got lots of different interests, but I would ask you to, um, kind of stand tall and remember your, the charter and why, why you're here and why we entrust this precious resource to you, and make sure that's available for many generations to come.
Thank you. Ms. McDermott.
Uh, you might recognize my last name. My husband was Jim McDermott, and he knew most everybody on the board, at least at some point. Um, I found in his papers something from years and years ago with Steve, with, um, Mr. Pedderly, bikers ignoring the ban on their use on trails, fine 50 bucks. Bikes are restricted to fire roads. Uh, they had written 140 tickets in that year. I've ridden the trails for 58 years. I've lived in Marin all my life. Uh, the gentlemen with the e-bikes, I have to say, when I see people on the road, I say, you know, horses aren't afraid of bikes. They're afraid of your performance on the bike, how you actually interact with others. The seniors on the e-bikes, no problem. I actually have a, a certain amount of fear with the little kids that are now all over in Safeway and down the middle of the street on their e-bike. Summer is coming, opposite of Throne, the Game of Thrones, right? Summer's coming. And those little guys, they are the most disrespectful and dangerous. Hikers too. They will, they will bother anything and go anywhere. When I first started riding and through all the way to probably about 40, maybe 50, 40 years ago, there was two sets of trails. We on horses and the hikers, we'd ride, we'd go on the single tracks. It was calm, peaceful. We were away. The bikes stayed on the fire road. Because I remember when Leo Cronin said, oh, he wants his wind in his hair, going down fish grade, right? Um, that cut all of fish grade off for us. Because to go up fish grade or down fish grade was a seriously dangerous thing at that point, because people were using it as a high-speed highway. Not going up, they'd go up, uh, through the, through the lake system and then zip down fish grade. There's certain trails that we used to use all the time. Elliott Trail was one. It's become terribly overgrown. A lot of the trails that we used to remain safe have become terribly overgrown. And if I meet a hiker or a biker on that trail, because I hike also, a lot of times I walk and lead my horse, um, there's just almost no room to move. So the clearing of the hills, I love it. Thank you so much. Really, it's, it's phenomenal.
10 seconds.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry. Um, next is Linda Navi, then Larry Minnichus, and then after Mr. Minnichus is Kim O'Brien. Go ahead, Ms. Navi.
Thank you very much. It's Linda Novi. Um, first off, uh, I just moved my horse back to Marin Stables. So I rode for the first time on Canyon Trail last night. And Larry, I'm going back tonight to kick the manure off the trail. I just want you to know that. Um, I want to thank the directors for their thoughtful comments, uh, gives me a great heart. And I want to thank you, Sean, for all your hard work. I, I know it's not over yet, but thank you. I, um, I appreciate what Nona said about outreach. And I think to that point, um, I want to suggest that we use the word visitor versus user. Visitor denotes a little bit more lighter on the land, whereas user is more consumptive. So I hope you would consider that. Um, I appreciate the directors mentioning links between recreation and protecting natural resources. I think that's really key. And I hope that we can practically measure any changes, um, between, uh, impacts on flora, on fauna, and, um, visitors, especially just the displacement of slower visitors. Um, so displacement can be kind of a silent thing. You just go away. Or what I'm learning at Marin Stables is many horse riders don't ride on the weekend anymore. It's too dangerous to, you know, there's just a lot of people out there. Um, I would like to also suggest that on the QR codes, it sounds like you want to include stewardship guidelines. I think that's fantastic. Um, and, uh, I think, Matt, it was, excuse me, Director Samson, you mentioned, um, impacts on roads and trails, or perhaps it was Director Smith. Um, I'd also like to suggest making it easier to report issues that visitors witness on roads and trails, how to communicate with the right parties regarding damages to facilities, behavior issues, tree down, et cetera. Let us be your eyes and ears. And I also want to thank, um, thank, uh, several of the directors who mentioned some alignment. Uh, this may have been at previous meetings with other land agencies, but I think it's really important in your discussions about decommissioning, as well as rules, early, early detection of trails issues with particularly Marin County parks. Thanks so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Novi. Mr. Minnichus and then Kim O'Brien?
Yeah, good afternoon again. And I, I'd just like to acknowledge the frustrations that some have expressed in here and understand that. I mean, this has been a long process. And even when we get through February and March, we'll still have a, a long process ahead of that before we get to, to opening of trails. And it's just important that everyone understands that. And coincidentally, this evening at 5:30, Marin Healthcare will be presenting, um, a, a, uh, a program on e-bikes, tweens and, and, and teens and the issues in Marin. Um, we've been working alongside Dr. John Ma, who, um, is the surgeon at Marin Health, who co-wrote the, um, the Marin Voice piece last week. And he's very concerned they're seeing a lot of, uh, injuries in the, in that group. So I think it's timely to mention this. Uh, the other point is QR codes. QR codes have a lot of value, and, uh, it's, it's a wonderful idea. And I'll just mention a couple of others, which is, it can help to enhance the trail experience, because you'll learn more about that trail. Um, excellent for education and awareness of, for example, northern spotted owls in the area, and to maintain a certain, um, quietness when, when you're in those areas. Um, you'll be able to provide real-time updates to trail conditions, and you'll be able to get user feedback. So if a user wants to report something, they'll be able to do that. Plus, you'll be getting information back when every time someone scans a code, you'll know how many scans you're getting. And the last point is, um, talking about, uh, raising funding. Uh, years ago, uh, we had a $2 per day parking fee at Natalie Coffin Green. And the advantage of that was on weekends. You saw it. You saw it, it cut down on the number of people coming in, traffic. And if any of you have been there on like a Saturday in the morning, you'll see how backed up it gets. It was only $2, there were complaints from the regulars, but if I could encourage you to reconsider putting a parking fee there, it's an excellent way of controlling traffic as well as everything else and raising a little bit of funding here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kim O'Brien, Tom Boss, Ellen Garvey, and then Vernon Hoffman. Go ahead, Kim Brian.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for listening. This is our watershed and the integrity of our water is really our priority. So in the 50 years that I've hiked in Marin, I've observed a pattern. When bikes do, are introduced to a trail, several inches of the topsoil is eroded down and the heavier the bike, the more erosion. So if we're going to do a pilot program, I think it's critical that we do an environmental impact report before. And that is our watershed and that is our task, is to maintain the quality of the water. As a water user, the cost of enforcement is a concern. I would like to pay for water and I'm happy to contribute to recreation, but if we put in, add an added group, we're going to need to add money for enforcement. When I hike in the watershed, each time I'm seeing illegal use. So we definitely need to have a budget for that and the bigger, more we expand, the more this is going to cost. That's something to need to look for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Boss and then Ellen Garvey, please.
Yeah, good afternoon and want to thank, as many have, both the board and staff for getting us to this point and supporting this process. This is a big deal and I think we need to remember that, even though it's taken over a year to get here, you know, we've not had a plan to manage recreation on the watershed in its entire 100-plus year history. And so, so we can't expect to figure this out overnight, but I think we're making great progress and I'm very excited for seeing the plan in February. I just want to briefly remind folks that recreation actually predated the creation of the Water District. We already had all kinds of activities on Mount Tam, the railroad, the dipsy race and hiking clubs. So that's why it's, we have a legacy of recreation on the watershed. And it was actually one of the key things called out is that we were going to get a water supply and a, and a public park for the, for the community. Wanted to recognize all the folks that have been engaged in this process throughout. I've been very humbled and, and happy that most people have been respectful, informed, open-minded, willing to listen. I think that was really key and I, I hope people will, I hope there will be future meetings and maybe even where we can start, some of the stakeholders can, can cross the lines and really learn from each other and do more collaboration. I think it's going to be key to making sure this outcome is successful. So build on that. I'm with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. Our focus is on finding trail experiences for people on bikes that are similar to those that hikers and equestrians enjoy. And when I evaluate what might be a good candidate for a trail project, I listened to three things that were passed on to me by the late Charles McGlashan, a former board director. He said, focus on projects that are intelligent, measured, and thoughtful. And I, that's what we do at MCBC and I think the bicycle community in general. We, we're not going to suggest putting bikes on a trail that's hugely popular with hikers where there's going to be high chance of conflict. We're not asking for a whole bunch of trails all at once. We want to do them one or two at a time and, and adapt and move forward. And then thoughtful, we want to, we want to incorporate all the things we're hearing from some of the folks concerned with conservation and, and we fully support that, making sure that we're not impacting wildlife and the habitat. Real brief, just support what Director Smith's, or excuse me, Smith said about a contribution program. We support that. And also Director Schmidt's idea of referencing some of the wildlife and data and habitat data, I think is very crucial. Last but not least, I just want to say, I want Nona to be happy and feel safe.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, Ellen Garvey, please, and then Vernon Huffman. And then after Vernon Huffman, last person is Bill Keen.
My name is Ellen Garvey. I'm a lifetime resident of Mill Valley for the most part. This is the first time I've come to one of these events, so I'll try to be succinct. First off, I grew up with Mrs. Twilliger, who some of you probably remember, going out and, you know, oh, Mr. Turkey Vulture and the whole thing. So I grew up hiking and going out and being out and about. I'm also a lifelong equestrian, having started riding when I was seven, eight years old. I have my horses out at the Dixon Ranch in Woodacre currently. And some of the issues that I come across are, whether I'm hiking or I'm riding, I know that when I've been hiking during the summer out of a deer park area, and also I think it's the Porcupine Ridge area, which is off of White's Hill, I have seen summer camps with kids on bikes up to 15 in a group. And I've tried to contact what looked like the adult that was leading and saying, I'm sorry, but this is just too much. This is too big a group. And they've said, well, there's no restriction on how many kids we can have in a camp or what have you. And this is on what I call single-foot trails. So I would hope that the powers that be would talk to these summer camps and say, you know, no more than eight kids in a group or limit the number. Number two, I'm not really in favor of having e-bikes on the trail. I think our older bikers would probably be very responsible, but I think it opens the gate to having these hybrid motorcycles, which some people call e-bikes. They're not, they're little motorcycles. And if they didn't go close to 30 miles an hour, they wouldn't be so popular. And I agree with the speaker who said, it's not the bike that the horses are afraid of, it's how the person is riding. And one thing I've noticed, because I spent some, a couple of years living in Sonoma County, is I've had better interactions with people on bikes in Sonoma County with them stopping, slowing down, getting off their bike, being on the right trail, as opposed to Marin County, where I've almost been run over, where I've been, it just was not a super positive experience. So, and on the bike meeting that you're having, I hope that you'll include equestrians in that, because that's a big part of it. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Vernon Huffman? Vernon Huffman?
I'm Vernon Huffman, Executive Director of Access for Bikes Foundation. And I'd like to reiterate the gratitude, the thank yous to the board and to the staff who've done a really good job facilitating this process, understanding that we don't really have a functioning recreation management plan right now on the mountain and the need for one. So it's been an interesting process. I've enjoyed being involved and I will be at the table and I'd love to help get us further along and I know we won't be done. I think adaptive management is the key, figuring out what we're trying and then adjusting as we go and making it better and better. I do want to also point out that if we look at our audience tonight, we're missing our, one of our main user groups, and that is our youth. And on any given weekend, I see probably upwards of 40, 50% of the user group on the mountain is our youth. So let's remember that this meeting isn't representative of everyone and it's easy for retired folk or self-employed people to get here. I stepped away from work, I told my employer and he allowed me to come, but let's, let's remember these day meetings aren't really representative of our community. Those youth that were, I just mentioned, they are the new stewards of our, of our lands. We've got to nurture them. We've got to be inclusive. We've got to give them a job, allow them to use the watershed, make them feel important, because some of our, we, I love Nona too, but she's not going to be here forever. So, but let's, let's nurture new stewards. And I want to point out in the presentation, section five, strategic opportunities, when we're talking about decommissioning social trails, I believe the board should tell staff, full stop. Look, we are evaluating a rec management plan here and some of those social trails might actually improve our ability to share. We heard a couple of equestrians today say they didn't feel safe with bikes on trails. Well, maybe these, some of these social trails should be added to the, to the network. The network was built with, at a time when we had a use level, that use level's grown and it will continue to grow, because our population isn't stagnant. Your QR code idea, Jed, brilliant. I will support that. And I think that especially if we, if we allow some trail access for bikes, they come away with a more rewarding experience and they go, huge stoke, I want to donate. And then in terms of Nona's comment and how to influence our behavior, let's try know instead of no. Let's get to the K-N-O-W, know who we are and what we need and want in an experience and let's get rid of the history of N-O to mountain bikers. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Keen, please.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right, thank you. First off, I want to say I'm Bill Keen, I'm from Fairfax, California. I used to be the general manager of the Open Space District in Sonoma County and I've done a lot of trail work in Marin and been riding the trails in Marin since my childhood and since 1984. I've been riding a bike, hiking and running on the, on the mountain. I want to commend the board for taking this really good step. It's a first step and I know it's been hard, but the idea of finding a way to share our trails with users that are already on those trails and on those fire roads is a long time coming. And so I really want to commend the board for doing that. It's not going to come without any pain. I think there's a lot of conversations that, that need to happen. And the gentleman that you just spoke, Access for Bikes, I think they should be included in that sit-down with MCBC, the Horse Council and MCL. As for what the future could hold, I think we just need to find ways to have access for users in a safe, environmentally sensitive way in all areas of the watershed and find ways for us to do it as cheap as possible. I know you've got a water supply issue and that's your, that's your priority and should be. And there's a lot of volunteers out there. Every Nike rider, the high school rider has to donate hours. Why not get them out on trails and have them help maintain trails that they're able to ride? I think you'd have a lot of kids out there. As for the QR program, Jed, I think that's a great idea. What I would suggest on that QR code program is let's be real clear about where the money for that is going to go. I think if it's going to go back into the trails and into user visitor education, I think that's a wonderful thing to do. But if it, but if people think that they don't know where the money's going to go, I think you might not get as much contribution. So if we could, if we could develop, you know, maybe a set of projects, you know, brush clearing, whatever it is, and people know it's going back into the use that they enjoy, I think that could be a really good win-win. And lastly, on e-bikes, it's silly for us to think we can legislate them out. I mean, the e-bikes that are being built today are not the e-bikes of yesterday. And I agree that class two and three shouldn't be on the trails, but class one, pretty soon you're not going to be able to tell the difference. The new ones that are being created are quiet and you can't even tell there's a motor on it. So let's find a way to have them on, on the watershed and let's just make sure we're educating and, and in a responsible way so that users of e-bikes are not speeding up hills, but, you know, recognizing that there are other users on the trails. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And a thank you to the public who came today to participate and a lot of really good thoughtful comments. It's very much appreciated and just reiterates how engaged our public here is in this county, not just on this issue, but the quality of our watershed. So the continued engagement is appreciated. Next up, Terry, upcoming meetings.
Yeah, the next upcoming meeting is scheduled for the night of, for next year, February 29th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, and this meeting is slated for the draft release of the rec management. Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting. Thank you.